Bring up again the gerrymandering done by Lizzie Felter. They have, they're gonna do a two, I think only two public um uh open meetings about it. And December second is the next one. That's on their next city council meeting. That they'll be talking about the gerrymandering. And they're trying to, they're coming to a decision whether or not they should reinstate the old maps, which were done in twenty twenty-two and not the ones that are current. Um, which I'm hoping that they vote against um leaving these maps like they are because that was a miscarriage of justice. It was illegal and it should have never been done. So that's December second, which is the next city council meeting. Um, now, um, if anybody, I wanted to kind of uh give you guys some news. You know, last night we talked about Mr. Fuller um and we showed you guys some videos. We might show some more. I'm not for sure. I, I think I should have had a conversation with co-host. But we do have some more videos on Mr. Fuller. Um, look, also you guys, um, he's having a memorial. They're having a memorial for him at the New Birth Fellowship Baptist Church. I think that's what it is, Missionary Baptist Church. And I think it's on Enterprise. I'm gonna double check, but I think it is at two o'clock and that's this Saturday. So I'm going to attempt to go if I can. I want to make sure the information is correct. So I will be checking on that. And that, you can find the information, actually it was on KLB. So you might can find the information over there and hopefully KLB has the right information, but that was what was um told. That is at two o'clock Saturday and it's going to be a memorial um for him. Um, so definitely, guys, if you can go, be available to go. Um, because he's gonna be well missed. And uh, it's gonna, yeah, he's gonna be well missed. Hello there, ma'am. Hello, Miss Dickson. Um, so next, we're gonna go ahead and get into the city council. Um, my co-host, do you have anything you want to say before we go ahead and get into it? I know you watched it earlier. Um, do you?
Yeah, y'all are gonna be, uh, so there was some things that was said that we've said, that the mayor said that he had never spoken on before, but uh, you'll see, you'll see. Very, very interesting. We're gonna definitely stop on that part and pick it apart.
Okay, just tell me when, okay?
You'll know.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Oops. It would be nice if I streamed it, right?
Yeah.
How about the play without streaming it? Hold up.
Um, a rebroadcast may be viewed on Optum Cable Channel Four. Alexandria website.
Get past all this.
Okay.
At the invocation.
Yep, that too. There's only a couple seconds.
Twenty twenty-six. Number four introduction. Orders authorizing the mayor to promote the city of Alexandria by entering to all contracts with fans and vendors for twenty twenty-six events and other matters with respect there too. Number five introduction of an ordinance relative to the Alexandria Health Care Initiative, LSUA to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city. Those necessary or desirable intergovernmental cooperative endeavor and joint services agreement and other contract related to the Jackson Street Allied Health Downtown Health Service Services Central Capital Improvements. More particularly described as local or other non-state capital project matches to authorize the project. LSUA Downtown Health number one nine six zero two two three zero one. If one L, one nine zero zero two four nine eight. Authorizing the expenditure and circumference of budget and prioritize fund. Authorizing agreements, commitments, and drawdowns with the, drawdowns with the state of Louisiana through the Division of Administration and/or through the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agriculture and Mechanical College, LSU, and other or through and with LSU Alexandria's foundation and other related parties and contracts and otherwise provided with respect there too. Number six introduction of an ordinance authorizing an annexation of six point eight nine six plus minus acres track of land located at twenty seven eleven North MacArthur Drive and part of lots, lots fifty-four and fifty-five of experiment plantation situated in sections eighteen and nineteen of Tomship Ford North. Range one west, Rapids Parish, Louisiana. AC one limited commercial district, MFO multifamily overlay district. Zoning classification is requested upon annexation for the development of a nursing home.
I need a motion, please. A second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Any items to committee?
Yes, sir. Four and five are legal.
Can we do six minutes?
What's six in? What committee is six in?
G resolution. Number seven, resolution to co-sponsor Zeta Phi Zeta Founder Community Foundation Scholarship Workshop at the Bolton Avenue Community Center.
I need a motion, please. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lawverdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
H ordinances for final adoption established to public care. Number eight to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low being submitted for treated wood poles.
I need a motion, please. A second. Move by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam President.
You, you're welcome.
My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White, Jr. I live at thirty-six thirty-eight Tenth Street in Alexandria, Louisiana. Uh, seven one three oh two and my phone number is area code three one eight four four six six nine three four. I know Jules Green had brought it up about this treated wood because in our area, they had the Creosote plant. So I don't know if y'all looked into this and see if we could put anything other than this treated wood, maybe steel poles or?
I looked into it, Mr. White.
You didn't look into it?
Yes, I did. I spoke about it at a previous meeting. I went to Pineville. I talked to a supervisor over there who actually um worked with those poles and those chemicals. The people that I spoke with have been there like thirty or forty-plus years. They say they don't have anything, no, no environmental, um, yes, so.
Well, see, that's, that's good. See, that's really good.
Thank you, Mr.
People can appreciate that. And let's pray for Joe Fuller's family because he was a city councilman.
Yes, he was. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number nine to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low being submitted for a minimum of one rear-loaded refuse truck, twenty-five cubic yard capacity.
A motion, please. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number ten to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low being submitted for a minimum of one gravel truck for the sanitation department.
Motion, please.
Move.
I need a second. Motion by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion.
I have a question. Uh, Mayor, overall, uh, how is our sanitation equipment looking? Overall.
Stop it. I don't know. Give me a, maybe a next meeting to answer it. This is. Okay, now, as plain as that question was, what does that question mean to you?
What do you mean?
What he said, back it up a little bit and play it.
Okay, hold up, hold up.
There you go, there, right about there.
One, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion.
I have a question. Uh, Mayor, overall, uh, how is our sanitation equipment looking?
Stop it.
Okay, so huh, go ahead, go ahead.
What did, what did he say?
He basically just asked a simple question. How does it look? And he's basically, go ahead.
What, he said, how does the sanitation, how does the sanitation equipment look overall?
Overall, yeah, okay. To me, it means that he wants to make sure that we all have, they have good sanitation equipment and there's nothing that needs to be fixed. Everything is up to par.
Now play it, now play it.
Gotcha. Hold up.
Overall.
I don't know. You give me a, maybe a next meeting to answer it. This is a bid.
Okay, I'm just, just curious, just like to know, just overall, kind of give us an assessment of how our equipment looks so that people can, can.
When you say looks.
Status of it, the status of it, workmanship.
If we're short or?
Yeah, if we're short, what do we need? Just want to kind of idea where we are with that.
Okay, stop it.
Okay.
You said you would get that.
Okay.
Now, you're asking the mayor about the sanitation department that he's the head of. And he doesn't know how to answer a question about how the equipment looks overall.
So, or, and, and, and this is crazy because he said, well, this is just a bid. Do you understand why we say what we say about how the council don't have all the information? A lot of times when they throw these things, when they create these ordinances. Because you got to remember, each proposal has to have an author to it. Doesn't matter what it is. They have to have an author in order for it to become an ordinance, um, for them to even talk about it. It's a bid. There's a reason why he asked that question.
My thing is, how can you ask for something and don't know the status of what you have?
There you go, there you go, there you go.
So are you just asking for stuff or do you really need it?
Well, yeah, exactly. So because you got to remember, proposals, when they put those bids out, something needs to be done, right? A repair needs to be done, a new equipment needs to be bought, something has to be done. So what is the action that's being taken? And his question is valid. It's nothing wrong with him asking that. It's just the ideal that he don't know. Because again, y'all, you got to remember, Jac pretends like he doesn't know what's going on on all his departments. Jac is a micro manager. Let me say this to you guys. We went over his personality a long time ago. He is a micro manager. There's nothing that goes on in the city of Alexandria that this man does not know what's going on. I'm telling you that. There's nothing that goes on in the city of Alexandria that he is not aware of. Nothing. Because he has his little flunkies that run back and telling him everything, right? So there's nothing that goes on in the city of Alexandria that he doesn't know.
Shouldn't that have been a part of the proposal?
Yeah.
On here or what we do, you know?
Yeah, it should be a listing of everything. Yeah, I think it should be. You're asking for them to accept the bid.
So what, you know, why are we, why are you even bidding for this?
Exactly.
That should have been a part of, but that just goes to the larger thing that I'm, I'm speaking to. Uh, yes, she's on, yeah, and he wants to drop too. Uh, yeah, so that goes with the whole thing about uh the, them pushing through stuff and not having the, the, the proper, I want to say vetting process, but yeah, that, yeah, the, the, they don't get the required paperwork that goes with it. Go ahead, hit the spacebar instead of clicking.
Hold up.
You gotta click on the window and then click on the spacebar.
An information form?
Yeah, yes. An inventory or? I'll reach out and see exactly what he wants and then we'll do it in court.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number eleven to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low being submitted for a minimum of one shuttle truck for the sanitation department.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second, please. Motion by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson.
Now, they backed up and asked for a truck, right? You on mute?
Okay, I'm sorry.
They turned around and asked for a truck, right?
Yeah.
So that should have told you, hey, we need to put in what we do have on hand.
Yeah.
We need it.
Yeah, yeah, that should be part of the, the bid. I mean, the proposal for them to, to explain to the city council. Because there was no need for him to ask that question if they don't know.
Right, so the mayor doesn't know what they have, but they're steady asking for more stuff?
No, exactly. No, the mayor does.
Well, okay. Well, either way it goes, it's just, it's like this whole Epstein thing. He either knows and don't want to say it, or he doesn't know and it's a shame that he don't know.
I just don't believe he don't know. I just don't believe that.
I can't believe it either, but go ahead, go ahead.
I believe that he definitely knows everything that goes on in that city, in that city. What goes on down at that city barn, I think he knows everything because there is a snitch in every department. There's a, let me say this again. In a facility like that, there's a snitch in every department.
The question is, how did that make it onto the agenda without having all the paperwork? Well, I know it's on the consent calendar, but how did it get, how did it get on his desk without the paperwork?
Yeah, cuz, yeah, cuz that's not just coming straight to the city council, y'all, okay? All of this is not going straight to the city council.
None of it's going through the city council.
Because Trey Giss, if I'm not mistaken, Trey Giss is the one who writes up everything, him and Jac Roy.
Yeah, him and Jac Roy. So, yeah, they, and, and the fact that he doesn't have that information on hand shows you that's a pattern and it's small, it's minute.
Yeah.
It's a pattern of, well, keep going, keep going.
Any, any discussions? All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number twelve to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low being submitted for the Sani Court Sports.
A motion, please. Second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilwoman Felter.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
All in favor. Any opposed?
Okay, so this is another thing I noticed today. So anytime they, she asks for a, a move, right, or a motion, right? Ballard typically is the one, on certain ones that he says move. But the person that backs him up, majority of this meeting, is Gary Johnson with the second.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You'll see, keep going.
Motion carried. Number thirteen to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to settle and compromise the disputes in the matter at the ninth, through a district, district court entitled Terry Holmes, person city of Alexandria, document number two seven three four one eight and other matters related there too.
Motion, please. Second, please. Move by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion. You want to discuss this, Mr. Um? I don't mind.
Okay. The only thing, and uh, my name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White, Jr. I live at thirty-six thirty-eight Tenth Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, zip seven one three oh two.
I get it, I get it.
When do we get to see how much goes out? Or do we ever get to see how much goes out? It, it's in the ordinance? Okay, that's fine. That's, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what they're talking about is a payout. The city is suing with somebody to the tune of three hundred seven thousand dollars.
Dollars, yep, 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 three hundred thousand dollars.
I wonder what that person sued the city for.
I know, I'm trying to figure out, that's not our um family down in Ruby, Carrie.
No, rewind it back and hear the name.
Yeah, I know the name already. You don't, I don't have to do that. I know who it is.
Uh-uh, no, I don't know. It's, I don't know, I don't know. But it's a three hundred thousand dollar settlement that's being paid out by the city. And, and that's what they went into executive session about.
Yeah, yeah.
But now that we know a little bit more about it, we can look into what took place. And we can find out what took place, then we know that the city of Alex, they, they, now, the city of Alexandria and all of their, look, you got, you got Jonathan Gons, you got Trey Giss up there, hell, you got Jac Roy up there, you got that other little dude up there. And all them people couldn't find a hole in that other person that sued them story enough to not have to settle?
Because most likely, majority of time, whenever you pay out to ours, is somebody that they actually were in the wrongdoing.
Yeah, yeah. So the city was in the wrong. That's, yeah.
Okay, before we go any further, let's talk about the legal fees and stuff. Remember when Mr. Fuller, because Mr. Fuller did this. Remember when Mr. Fuller was trying to get our legal fees down? Because they come to find out that we were paying more for legal fees with all these lawyers stacked into the city of Alexandria, that they were paying out more than Shreveport?
That was Goldwing's. Goldwing's eats all that up.
No, 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 no. These were all, this is all, anybody they had contracts with to do legal, any kind.
And we found out majority of the contract money went to Goldwing's.
Yeah, so they, the thing is, they were spending more money in legal fees than the city of Shreveport. And Shreveport is three times our size. And what you find out is those of his buddies, those attorneys were all his buddies. This is why we say what we say. We're not making this up. We don't have no, I don't have nothing against him. I'm just, we're just pointing out when you have a mayor that does the things that he does and get away with. Okay? Now, let's go ahead and finish playing.
Discussion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number fourteen to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal received from Util Serv LLC for water distribution flushing program.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments. Mr. White.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Again, I'm Mr. Cornelius Lawson White, Jr. My address is thirty-six thirty-eight.
I don't, this, this ordinance.
Yes, she did. You said. So I'm just telling you what the man said. You can look at the tape. What he said.
Mr. White, I'm finna tell you, this water distribution flushing program is for the firemen to go out to flush the, uh,
What?
You gotta stop it and back it up so you can hear his question.
Oh.
Fire, fire, um.
Be periodic testing and everything?
I don't, this, this ordinance.
Yes, she did. You said. So I'm just telling you. Wait, you got. Three one eight four four six six nine three four. Now on this, now the mayor was talking about, we'll probably be seeing brown water in our uh, water and it'll be good to drink. So will they be periodic testing and everything?
I don't, this, this ordinance.
Yes, she did.
Okay, hold up. Did you hear what he said?
I didn't say that.
Y'all remember? Hold up, hold up.
Yeah, you remember when he said it? I remember when he said that. I remember when he said it.
Got it. Okay, so we were, we were trying to figure out, thank you, Ms. Bell, we were trying to figure out.
Oh, yeah, I gotta get, I gotta, I need her in here.
Get in here.
Yeah.
See if we can send her the, uh, what's her name? We were trying to figure out what that was about. That's what it was. We were trying to get that information. Because the only Terry Holmes I know.
No, we don't. We have to look into it. We have to find it and look it up.
Yeah, we, yeah, we could do that. Um, but did you hear what he said? He, if y'all remember, we played it on the show where he said.
That the water was fine to drink.
Yeah.
He said, hell, I got brown water.
He sure did. He sure did say that. That's not no lie. He's telling the truth. Mr. White telling the truth. He did say that.
Uh, hold on, I gotta.
I'm telling y'all, he has a certain hatred. Y'all don't want to admit it, but he has a certain hatred for Mr. White. Y'all.
It's a disdain. It's not a hatred.
You can call it whatever, whatever.
Because disdain is worse than hatred. He, he, he abhors Mr. White.
Yeah, he despises him.
Yeah, yeah, he, he abhors him. He, he can't stand him.
Okay. Okay.
You're gonna have to send it to her cuz uh, oh, no, I got it, I got it.
You got it?
No, I don't, no, I don't. No, I don't.
Okay, I'll send it to her. I got it.
Yeah, cuz.
Give me a second. Ms. Bell. No, oh.
Give me just a second. There it goes. Ms. Bell, you're gonna have to uh, accept the, uh, the what you call it. The uh, request. Check your inbox, remember.
Okay, yeah, he did. Hold up. I got it, I got it. I'll just send it to her. Hold up. I'm gonna stop the.
All right, well, we got both of them covered. We got both of them covered. Yeah, they both covered. Same thing.
Hold up. I'm gonna stop it for a minute until I can send it real quick. Just to make sure she gets it.
Check your inbox, remember. These people is crazy. These people is gaslighting us. He threw his hands up and everything.
Look, uh, yeah, you did, sir. Don't lie to us like that. We, we know you said it. We remember when you said it.
Would you gaslight me?
Hold up. Where is she at? Let's see.
There she go. I got her.
You got her? Okay, cool.
Hey, Ms. Bell.
Hello, everyone. I didn't hear you.
We might be talking on top of each other tomorrow.
Oh, hey.
I'm sorry. I said, how are you?
I'm doing well and yourself.
I can't complain right now. Can't complain right now.
All right, can, can you run that last part back real quick?
Yeah.
I, I, I didn't say that.
One three oh two. My phone number is area code three one eight four four six six nine three four. Now on this, now the mayor was talking about, we'll probably be seeing brown water in our uh, water and it'll be good to drink. So will they be periodic testing and everything?
I don't, this, this ordinance.
You said. So I'm just telling you what the man said. You can look at the tape.
Well, Mr. White.
What he said.
Mr. White, I'm finna tell you, this water distribution flushing program is for the firemen to go out to flush the, uh, fire, fire hydrants, yes, to make sure that it gets all the residue or whatever may be inside the water. And that is why we do that, so that we could not have brown water.
What was the other thing? With the brown water, when he, you don't know nothing about that? This is, this is totally different from that.
Another person who do not like him is Ballard. Ballard and Fowler can't stand Mr. White. Ballard does have a hatred for him. I promise you he does. He can't stand whenever Mr. White say something. He watches Mr. White. And he just, you could see his body language change. He cannot stand Mr. White.
Does the same thing. Trey, you get to, you, when you see Trey Giss lean back in that chair, you get to rock in the damn hole, he bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, that's, that's that white. Yeah, yeah. He, um, they, he, that's that KKK-ness they have in them. I'm sorry, but that's.
Allegedly, allegedly.
Allegedly, okay, whatever, okay. All right.
Ms. Bell, you said you remember him saying that?
I remember when he said it too.
Yes, I do remember that.
Yeah, he sure said it.
I didn't say that.
He, he said, cuz he could drink the brown water too.
He sure did.
And he lives in District Four, cuz he meant, he said where he lived at. Yeah, so be careful what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, cuz we do know, matter of fact, we played it on here. One of the um, city councilmem, um, meetings we played. One of the, um, city council mem- uh, meetings we played on here, he said.
I want you guys to listen to what Mr. White asked about. Um, is there another project dealing with the brown water?
Okay.
And I think Ms. Perry tells him no, but listen to Roy's response.
Okay, that's what's coming up.
That's what you're saying?
This doesn't have anything to do with the brown water that we discussed.
No, no, hold up. I'm just asking about, okay, thi- this is a second flushing that we're having? Trying to find out.
This is routine.
What's this other flushing?
All flushings are based, based on the same thing, Mr. White. When you flush the fire hydrants, you're flushing out the residue, you're flushing out. Whatever may be inside, so that you can have water, decent water that is not brown that you're, um, asking about.
Well, I'm just asking, okay, I understand what you're saying. This is the routine, cause I've seen the fire department come by, cause I've got a hydrant on my corner spot, so I see them come by. But the other flushing, what about that?
That's the same thing.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Just one question, uh. You did answer the wheres for the fire hydrants. What is the occurrence of those flushes, Mayor?
What do you mean the occurrence? We're flushed, the fire department is constantly in a state of flushing. That's what, uh, is part of keeping our fire rating number one, which we've achieved for the first time. Uh, we also have several other projects that flush that are separate from, uh, the fire department flushing that we've gone over quite a few times this year included, where we have the unit directional flushing, so you're pushing sediment one way, we have several different programs that overlap. Uh, two of those, uh, programs were already approved.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And this, the.
I'm sorry, it's loud in my ear, so.
So listen, listen, listen. Did anybody, which, Ms. Linda, did you catch that?
Yes.
Now, what he saying is that the fire department is always in a state of flushing. Okay, always. It's a, it's a, it's a recurring thing that happens often, is when, is all the time, it's constant, is what he said. Now, play it. And listen to Malcolm's question.
Fire hydrant flushing is something that is a constant all the time. So what happens is sometimes debris is stirred up by flushing. And so if you know the, if you see the fire department flushing in your area while it's necessary, it can be a upset. By doing it, but that is a necessary thing to keep those fire hydrants and the pressure and everything correct. It also, as Madam President said, actually has a sal- it has an effect on also keeping things moving. So while it's not part of the unit directional and other programs, we do schedule in a way to follow that. So you try to, we're trying to maintain a process to push any sediment if we think we've caused somewhere out or identify where it is.
I have a question, Mayor. Now, when we, when we flush those hydrants, are those hydrants connected to mains that also run water to the homes, or is it just a separate system just for the fire, fire hydrants? Is all one system? Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number fifteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorized in the.
So, okay, hold up. I got a question. I got a question. So if it's all one system, then nobody should have brown water?
Ah. He said that they have a system set up to where they can push the sediment where they want it to go.
Ah, he sure did.
What does that tell you? So if Districts Three got brown water and Districts One and Two don't, what does that tell you?
Somebody might be pushing some water in some directions that it shouldn't be.
And who's paying for the water?
They, the citizens are. Hmm, that's a good observation.
They literally, they literally tell you we waste water. We waste water all the time. We waste water on the regular. Yeah, we do it to keep the pressure normal. Yeah, we're always, we're always, yeah, we're always running water.
But if you're always running water, then somebody should have some clean water. That mean, this is what I'm getting. I'm getting, if you're doing that on a constant occurrence and constant basis, then everybody water shouldn't look exactly the same. Am I right?
Nah, I think now they're starting to just acknowledge that they pushed it all in one spot. Like, yeah, we gotta flush it.
Uh, do you underst- I mean.
They've been flushing all the settlement out of their districts into our districts.
Because it say, he said all one system.
It's all one system. So if they've got a scheduled maintenance set up to where they flush the water, then because I remember him saying something, and Ms. Bell, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, I remember him saying something about there not being no brown water.
Yeah, he did say something about them not having, I don't know, in, but you can't say that and then turn around and say, I can drink brown water. It don't make no sense.
I, I can't remember what he said, but it was something to the effect of basically, oh! When he was telling everybody that the water, you need to check the pipes in your house, it's not on the city.
That was a letter from the EPA that went down to everybody.
Look who we got.
Hey. Hey, folks, I had to call in. I was listening on the computer while I was doing some other things. Let me, let me clear up something for you. Um, this talk about flushing, what they're doing, they're just opening up a fire hydrant and just let it flow, so the water's just going into a ditch or in the street or, or whatever. So what, uh, what Fowler told, uh, Malcolm is not true. And of course, District Five don't have these problems, right? So Fowler would, wouldn't even know what, what we're really talking about. Willard never really go into, uh, Districts One, Two, or Three. So he, he probably have never witnessed this. But when they're talking about flushing, they are opening up a fire hydrant and just letting that water flow. Now, this is what the situation is. We have wells that provide water for the city of Alexandria. The, um, the strata where the water wells tap into, when the water flows through those wells, it also brings sediment and things that's in the strata where the water is located. So that flows into the system. And depending on which wells are going into certain parts, certain sections of the city, those sections of the city, Districts One, Two, and Three, get a lot of sediment. Now, here's what causes a, a bigger problem. A lot of areas in, uh, Districts One, Two, and Three, because District Two gets brown water, District Three gets brown water. Um, the problem is, a lot of those pipes are very, very old. They're more than forty, fifty years old. And they're not as large, okay? And what happens is that this sediment that comes out of the well and ends up in those pipes, these pipes, some of them are dead-ended. So if you have a water main going down a large street and the side streets that connect to, uh, that large street, the water line that comes off of the main water line going down the dead-end street, those are the places where we have problems with brown water. Because the, the sediment that comes from the water wells and flows through the main water system, when it gets into that dead-end line, the flow slows down or stops. And so the sediment actually settles out. It deposits, it form a deposit along the bottom of that, uh, that water line. So think about this. Let's say you're sleeping or, uh, at nighttime, when you're not using your water. That water through the line that feeds your street and your house is stagnant. So all of the sediment in that water settles out. And then the next morning, when you open up your water, uh, faucets and that water starts flowing again, it brings that sediment into your house. And that's the problem we're having. Now, there's a couple of ways to, uh, uh, correct this problem. And one of the ways that the city is using is to come out and open those fire hydrants that's on that street and let that water flow and hope that water, the flow of that water is moving all of the deposited sediment that's in the bottom of that line that feeds your house. So when they're doing that flushing, that's what they're talking about. It's not flushing into another line that's recirculating that. What it's doing is flushing it onto the ground. Now, if y'all could remember a long time ago, I went out to Ms. Velma Jacob's house because the, uh, they were having brown water problems, but the, the hydrant was right across the street from her house. Well, they flushed that so often because she's on a dead-end street, like most of the other ones along there. The problem was, all of the flushing they did was eroding the ditch and, uh, uh, the, uh, sediment that was underneath the street. So they had a major problem. Okay, they were trying to correct one problem and it was causing another equally disastrous problem. So here are the things that the city would need to do to correct the brown water. They would either have to take those, uh, wells and put some kind of sediment, uh, filtration on there. And that's very expensive to do. It'll take several million dollars, okay? The other thing is, you take the, the lines, those dead-end lines, and you make it a continuous loop, so that it doesn't just dead-end and the water becomes stagnant. And when the water stops flowing, the heavy particles, the sediment drops out. It settles to the bottom. And so that's a problem. So what they would need to do is either go in, uh, put larger lines in there and, uh, and make them continuous to where if it comes down one street, it'll make a U and go back and connect into the, uh, uh, another line going somewhere else. And it would keep flowing, so it would not stagnate and drop out all of that sediment. The other thing that they would have to do is to put filters on everyone's home where, uh, they have these dead-end lines. Now, if they did that, that's very expensive also, okay? Now, the problem with that is, they would have to go into each individual home and do some work on the piping system and put, uh, filters there to trap out or collect the sediment. Those filters would need to be changed on a regular basis, whether it's three months or, or one month or six months. But they would need to do that on a regular basis, okay? And if the pressure drops too much, that means the city would need to install a pump to help, uh, get the water into the homes. So either way you do it, it's going to be a major capital project. But this nonsense that, that Fowler just told, uh, Malcolm, that's not true. That water does not go into another system. It goes into a ditch or it goes into the street. And, uh, if they are always flushing, that means you got some big problems with sediment, uh, sediment. But now, keep, keep this in mind. District Four, Districts Five, they don't have this problem. District One got it to a, a, a real low, uh, frequency. But District Two and District Three, they have brown water issues. And, uh, and they're just not telling the truth here. And unfortunately, our, our council members don't know enough about the, the problem to really be able to, uh, explore it further and ask more questions. You know, but I had to call in, uh, I was doing some work on a computer, but listening to, uh, to the show just to, to make sure, um, you know, you guys can go away with the correct information. And, uh, so that's, that's what the deal is.
Thank you. How you doing?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm hanging in there. And by the way, uh, your, your show the other night, the tribute to Joe Fuller, it was excellent. And I thank you for doing that. That, that was great.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
But look, Mr. Porter, before you go, baby, look, so they're saying that it goes into all one system. They're saying even when they flush it out, it all goes in one direction.
No, that's not true. See, because when they flush, they're opening a fire hydrant, taking the. You know how in New York, when it got hot, we used to open the fire.
Yeah, 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 sure did.
Well, that water just going on the streets, right?
Yeah.
They're, they're doing the exact same thing. It's just that instead of cooling, cooling off the kids, it's just trying to remove the sediment that has settled in the bottom of those, uh, pipes to get them out. And the way they do it, they just open up the fire hydrant and let the water flow and hopefully it takes the sediment out with it. Uh, and they do that, uh, it, from what Jacque Roy said. And I don't even know if he knows what he's talking about, to be honest, but I don't know either. It's just that if there is a, if they're always flushing, then that's a big problem. And then your other question, who pays for it? So, uh, the city of Alexandria owns the water well.
Yes, that's right.
So the water that gets charged is whatever goes through meters. Okay, so if they're flowing it through the water hydrants, it's not going through your meter, so you should not get charged for it. And since we own the water wells and the reservoirs, um, that just ends up water that's being wasted, that water that we could use, but it should not be water that the citizens are paying for. Only the water that goes through your meter, uh, should you be paying for.
But aren't you still wasting water with that system? Aren't you still regardless?
Oh, yeah, because you open the hydrant and run that water, it's going into the ditch, which, you know, goes into the Chaplin Canal or the Horseshoe Canal. I mean, it's, it's, it's flowing out of the city. So, yeah. That's water you could otherwise drink or, uh, take a bath in or wash dishes or cook with. Yeah, that water's, uh, going. That's right.
Okay, now, I don't know if you remember when we did the, the, um, the show about Cure, when Cure came in, which was, uh, Davi Thomas and all, Thomas Davi came in and gave an analysis about how thing, how the utilities need to be redirected or whatever with the money and stuff. Now, he also mentioned, the other guy also mentioned. Now, he also mentioned, the other guy also mentioned about selling the water. Saying that we have water that could be sold like other cities do. They sell their water to other cities that need water. You know what I'm saying? That would be a profit.
That's true, because the City of Alexandria owns several water wells. These are reservoirs that I think are about three, these are water stratters in the earth. Underground, that's about 300 feet, 400 feet below the surface. And we have, we have wells drilled into those stratters, okay? And so we pump that water from the stratters into our water towers. And what goes with it is all the sediment that comes out that zone where we're getting the water from. And then when it leaves that tower, it goes into our homes, okay? Now District Five and Four don't have the problem with brown water. And when Jacque Roy claimed he got brown water also and he drank it. He's lying to us, he's just bold faced lying to us, okay? Because District Four and Five don't have these problems. And, but no, One, Two, and Three do. One, not so much, Three is the most. And District Two have a lot of those issues also. But, but yeah, that water is water we own. And we got a lot in those reservoirs until, I shouldn't call them reservoirs, they're underground in strata. And until that runs dry, yeah, that's something we could definitely sell. That's something we have a lot of.
And that's what he was saying, he said, you guys have some good water that could be sold. He said, you guys could be selling your water. And he told them that.
Yeah.
Which will help with the revenue.
Well, look, there was, the first time Malcolm Lavendane was in office as a public member. One of his projects was to have a water park in Alexandria. Because one of the things we have a lot of in abundance that's inexpensive for us is water. And he was suggesting that we do one right on the side of the expressway that goes across the river. You know, before it got there, right on the river. Yeah, so we've known this for a while and we recognize this. But we've never capitalized on it, we never took advantage of it.
Wow, okay, let's finish.
Yeah, stick around, stick around, Mr. Porter. You gotta get arrested.
Yeah, if you can.
Okay, I'll stick around.
Okay.
Here, toward the engine overhaul service contract for DG Honda units five, six, seven, and eight. To Motor Service Ugo Stamps Inc. as backup service provider.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Beloit, public comments, discussion.
Yes.
Yes.
In reading the fact sheet, it says we're currently in dispute over with Wartzilla. There's no explanation for the dispute. May someone please tell me why we're in dispute with the manufacturer of the said items that we purchased?
I didn't know they used the word dispute, but they do. So right now we have in our Wartzilla engines, Wartzilla was the low bidder. And Wartzilla, who built those engines and actually supplies its own parts. The city under the public bid law has to bid all of our parts. And so part of bidding, as all of you know, you can't necessarily bid. I want a Dodge truck that is sold at such and such place because you're cheating the bid law. You'd have to say the specs and Ford and Chevy could both, you know, they can both bid on it. And while everybody may want one kind of truck, it doesn't work that way. In a similar way, but in a much more, I guess I would just say a less practical issue. Because you're getting into very unique parts that are constructed with certain tensile strength. So how much heat they take, it could be off by just the tiniest amount and it would be a problem. Unfortunately, our bid law in Louisiana does not make any exception for parts, even for our utility system at that level. So when we bid the parts, we get back on a separate bid, whoever's the low bidder. And they will bid in non OEM parts. And all of you know, that's non original equipment manufacturer parts. So just like when you have a, I can't think of the name of the most popular one. But the one that ensures your car and you go and you call your warranty in and you go to the spot. They can use non OEM parts. And you say, no, I have this nice car, I want you to buy new ones. And they say, we don't have to, we can go get these parts. And you may take that to the shop where you're gonna do it and they don't want to use that part. They want you to get a BMW part or a Mercedes part for whatever your nice car is. You get into a battle about it, in a very similar way, that's what's happening here. We have a situation where Wartzilla manufactures the parts. And Wartzilla happened to come in as the low bidder. So we had a separate bid for the parts and then Wartzilla came in as a low bidder. Unfortunately, we can't hire Wartzilla who built everything in a professional service agreement to use only its parts. The bid law doesn't allow that. So Wartzilla, for the first time, because this is, we've been using non OEMs for a while, said. We're not gonna work on engines unless you use our parts. Dispute. So we have them finishing Engine Five, we worked out a deal with them, these are for your other
Okay, we wouldn't even be in this situation if they would have never spent that money on those parts. Can y'all hear me?
I got it, yeah, some people with this thing.
Okay, there you go. Now, I'm not on mute. No, he's not on mute, I'm looking at him. Hello, Mr. Porter, can you hear us? He can't hear us.
He can't hear.
Okay, he went mute. Okay, so.
Can you hear us, Mr. Porter?
Can you hear us, Mr. Porter? No, he can't hear us.
He can't hear.
He'll fix it. So with those Wartzilla parts, y'all, if you hear what he's saying. So down the line, these propellers, these big old ship propellers have become a problem. Down the line.
Okay.
Think about that.
I think he fixed now, can you hear us, Mr. Porter?
No, he can't hear us yet. Mr. Porter? He can't hear us yet. But when they purchase them, this now shows y'all that these parts are now becoming an issue down the line. Everybody wasn't in total agreeance when they bought these parts. At the time, if I'm not mistaken, I know Green was on the council, I think Green was on the council. Oh shoot, I think Lavendane was on the council then. Because I remember when they brought it up, when they start talking about it. And I remember this was, I think it was after the purchase of them. That had to be, boy, that had to be, ooh. I think that's when Brian was alive and we went to the city council meetings. And they were talking about them, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's when they got them. And now down the line, they're starting to have issues with them. Now you heard what he said, they've been getting away with non type whatever that is. You know, the parts don't have to be from the company itself. Well, now Wartzilla's saying, okay, you're not gonna use my parts of my machinery that I bought, you guys purchased from me. We're not gonna fix it. But because, now, did y'all pay attention to the Louisiana law before you bought those parts? Or did you already know that? That you couldn't, that they were not able to use those parts?
I think they had never been questioned on it before.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, because I don't think it's ever been brought up, that's what I think.
Hold on, hold on, here goes Mr. Porter.
He's trying to get in. Hello?
Are you stuck?
Because I know that was a big thing and a lot of, there we go. Can you hear us, Mr. Porter?
I can, but everything had stopped.
Oh yeah, you went, it started staticking on our end, but we could see you, you just couldn't hear us.
Yeah.
But yeah, run it back for him real quick.
Hold on.
Yeah, it was telling, getting a message saying those heads muted your mic.
Yeah, your mic.
A whole bunch of static.
Yeah, you sound digital, you had went digital for a second. Okay, so I'm gonna play it again and I want to get your explanation, give me a second.
Whatever your nice car is, you get into a battle about it, in a very similar way, that's what's happening here. We have a situation where Wartzilla manufactures the parts. And Wartzilla happened to come in as the low bidder. So we had a separate bid for the parts and then Wartzilla came in as a low bidder. Unfortunately, we can't hire Wartzilla who built everything in a professional service agreement to use only its parts. The bid law doesn't allow that. So Wartzilla, for the first time, because this is, we've been using non OEMs for a while, said. We're not gonna work on engines unless you use our parts. Dispute. So we have them finishing Engine Five, we worked out a deal with them, these are for your other engines. My concern will always be and remains, and Marcus and I are working through this. Having the assurances that non OEMs for the type of asset we have, different than a car. Has to work at the same level. All of you will know this too, at this level, there are international grading agencies, if you will. And they look at the parts and they determine that it's been tested. And it has the same tensility or tensile strength, the ability will stand force. And all of those different things are in place. While I'm convinced that we're doing it right and these guys are doing the right thing. I remain a little concerned because of the unique nature of the Wartzilla engines. And what I know to be the level of Wartzilla is a fine company, I mean, these guys are doing the best in the world at this. And so if they don't want to warrant other parts, it's not warranty. So remember, those are old, we're out of warranty. One of the questions I should have settled for you first is, will this void a warranty? No, we're way out of time on that. But I still have to worry about the integrity of the engines and if any part that we use isn't. So remember, these are big companies that make them exactly the same. So you could have big manifold, gee, these are like a giant Rolls Royce car engine, if you would imagine, but as big as this room. So all of those different things have to be looked at. Their handling number five, which tells you a little bit about the dispute. The fact that they're willing to use certain things to do five is a little bit of a tell, if you will, on, well, why not do the others? But they want you to use their parts out of mind. So we're trying to work that out with them.
Is litigation?
In the meantime, no, no, absolutely no litigation. That's why I was surprised they used the word dispute. No litigation, Wartzilla's doing that. What I think we're trying to work out is to make them change their mind and do it, we've done it in the past. I'd like to see Wartzilla do it. This other group who is not Wartzilla came in a little over, I think it's 300,000 of the next responsible bidder. They've worked for us before, they've serviced the engine before. The reason we want to do this now is belt and suspenders. Because of our requirements with MISO to stay on time and have our
That's the problem. That's the problem, MISO is the problem. Because, see, they have to, see, those are the requirements MISO says they have to have.
Oh, I love him, Mr. Porter is out.
Yeah, I see. His camera's out, he'll come back in. Those are the requirements MISO wants them to have. No, he can't hear it just yet. He trying to get in there. Those are, okay, so they're having to make sure everything, because the whole purpose of all of that was for them to get on that grid. To be part of that co-op, that was the whole thing.
Can you hear us, Mr. Porter? No.
Nope, he probably needs to go back off and then come back in. But yeah. Yeah, that
He hears, he hears, because he did it.
Yeah.
So the bigger problem is, we're doing this for MISO.
Yeah, because in order for you to stay on, to stay in their requirements, as a, Derek, let's see, he's trying to come in. Add to state, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
All right.
Okay, I was able to hear you guys, you just didn't hear me.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you.
Now, did you hear, did you hear what Jacque said?
I did, and, look, this is a little bit complicated. Here's the situation. You have turbines that are built by a particular manufacturer, a particular company. And they would like to be the ones who work on your units, sell you parts and things like that. And, you know, Jacque Roy's a lawyer, he's not an engineer. So he kind of struggled to explain this. But this is the analogy he should have used. If you buy a car from a manufacturer, say you buy a Ford. When it's under warranty, you take it back to Ford. But after the warranty's gone, you don't have to buy Ford parts or take it to Ford. You can take it to someone else who can work on your car, okay? And they may use parts that are not manufactured by Ford, all right? But if you take your car to Ford, you cannot use any, Ford will not put any other parts on your car except the Ford manufactured parts. And that's what this company is saying. When you hire us to come in and work on our equipment, we're not gonna use parts that you bought from somebody else. You have to buy our parts. Now their parts cost more. That's the reason if you have a Ford, instead of going to Ford and buying tires or a battery or an alternator, you'll go somewhere else and buy it. And then when you go to Ford, not only do the parts cost more, but their labor is more. So you might take it to someone else, like a Pep Boys or somebody, to get the work done. Okay, so what Alexandria is trying to do for these Wartzilla engines. And I believe Wartzilla is made in Switzerland, but it's European. So you're using their trained mechanic service people, technicians to do the work. But instead of buying parts from Wartzilla, they were buying parts from other manufacturers who make similar type parts. And the Wartzilla company is saying, we will no longer send our people to work on your units. And install parts that you bought from somebody else. You need to buy the parts from us. So that's what the issue is. But now the parts from the other companies cost less than what Wartzilla charges for. And that's the problem. When they go out to bid, when the City of Alexandria goes out to bid for these parts. These other companies can provide a similar part for less money. But they'll go But they'll go directly to Wartzilla for the service people to do the work. And their people are saying, or the company is saying, we will no longer do the work for you uh, with somebody else's parts. You want us to do the work, you have to buy the parts from us. And it just means a lot more money. But you're absolutely right. You see, when uh, when Jac Roy put us into MISO, MISO calls all the shots for our plants, uh, when we run and when we don't run. Uh, that's uh, that's the agreement with MISO. So um, so that's, that's what landed us in this situation.
And and so all those times I had to vote, vote on those Wartzilla parts? Uh, that, like, that wasn't the OEMs? Or was that the actual Wartzilla parts?
Uh, yeah, that was uh, I believe that was the OEM, that was the original equipment manufacturer, who is Wartzilla. And that's uh, that, I do believe that's what that, all of that was. And look, that comes up almost every month. Every month you got that on the agenda.
Right, that's a lot of money. And you know what, you guys? They make, these are ship parts.
Uh, yeah, it it comes over there. They do not have a manufacturing plant in the United States. All of that's coming from Europe.
They have an office in New Orleans, but they don't have a plant.
Yeah, I don't know if they stock parts there, maybe.
No, they don't.
They do not?
Uh-uh, no. It, and look, it's an international workboat show. So this is boat parts.
Well, uh, turbines are used on a lot of different things. Uh, they're used on boats, they're used on um, uh, trains, uh, they're used in airplanes, not these big tight turbines. But but yes, uh, uh, those turbines can be put on big, huge vessels, ocean-going vessels to drive, to drive the propellers, to run.
Yep.
To propel the ships. And uh, and you're probably familiar with that uh, Taviris, having been in the Navy. Uh, that's uh, in, for the United States, we use Westinghouse and General Electric turbines for our naval vessels, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Wow. All right then. That's a good explanation there. Okay, so and you know what, Mr. Porter, you're correct. Every month we doing something to them doggone DG Hunter units, uh, every month.
Every month.
And they don't even, they're not even firing them up.
No, no, they're not running and uh.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Say less, keep going.
Oh, we gonna find out something?
Yeah, you gonna find out something.
Okay, all right.
Engines fire as they're called on every day and be compliant with MISO, we wanna have both in place. We'll continue to talk to them. There is no legal dispute. Wartzilla is not saying, if you will, on, well, why not do the others? But they want you to use their parts out of mind. So we're trying to work that out with them.
Is litigation?
In the meantime, no, no, absolutely no litigation. That's why I was surprised they used the word dispute. No litigation. Wartzilla is doing that. What I think we're trying to work out is to to make them change their mind and do it. We've done it in the past. Uh, I'd like to see Wartzilla do it. This other group who is not Wartzilla came in a little over, I think it's three hundred thousand of the next responsible bidder. They've worked for us before. They've serviced the engine before. The reason we wanna do this now is belt and suspenders. Because of our requirements with MISO to stay on time and have our engines fire as they're called on every day and be compliant with MISO, we wanna have both in place. We'll continue to talk to them. There is no legal dispute. Wartzilla is not saying we're suing you or anything. They're just saying we won't work unless you buy our parts. We're constrained by a bid law that in this case, I think.
Okay.
Listen, if you hear what he said, he said that MISO calls on them every day to fire up their engines.
Um, I, I don't, uh, now you see, this is what I don't really know. First of all, um, you're, you need to run your engines on a certain frequency. And uh, you you know, so that it's our responsibility with MISO is that when they call us, we have to be up and running within four hours. And then when we do run, we would run for a minimum of four hours or as long as they uh, ask us to run, okay? So one of the ways to make sure that you can fire up and run within four hours is to test your units daily, okay? Um, so if you got four units over there, uh, and they usually ask you to run one of them, you would test one, one day, and bring it up to speed, run it, and then shut it down. Um, I'm not sure how they're doing it, if they're doing it on a daily basis, a weekly basis or whatever. Uh, but you do need to test your units to make sure they can uh, come up and and run. Now, the other thing is that maybe MISO does call them and ask them to run. But if they do, it would be, the the shortest amount of time they would ask them to run is four hours. So that way you're not just starting up, shutting down, starting up, shutting down. So once MISO calls, say, look, Alexandria, we need you to run, we need this much uh, electricity, that'll let us know, do we put one unit on, two unit on, three units on? And, and the minimum time is four hours. If they need us to go longer, they would tell us that, and we would run uh, as long as uh, they need us. But here's something to keep in mind. Uh, the, one of the reasons our units don't run all the time is because we're one of the highest cost producers of electricity. It costs us more cents per, to produce a kilowatt of electrical energy than the other units in their system. So they run the lower cost ones first, and then as they have more of a need, they'll bring on the higher cost ones uh, later on. And that way MISO maximizes its profit. If you have a unit that can produce a kilowatt of electrical energy for four cents every hour, okay, four cents per kilowatt. Then, and we're billing other people at twelve cents. You want to run those four cent per kilowatt units. Now you come to Alexandria and if it costs eight cents per kilowatt hour, you don't wanna run us unless you absolutely need us. That's if another unit just can't uh, uh, has to shut down for whatever reason, and we can't meet our uh, MISO, cannot meet their commitments. Or if they have to take a unit out to overhaul it, and they do that every six months, then you need somebody who can run while the other units are being overhauled. It's those sorts of situations that Alexandria is asked to run. Otherwise, we really don't run. Not much at all.
Uh, I think what I was, I was gonna wanna ask you after that is uh, what's the benefit of being in MISO?
Well, um, Alexandria is a small fish in a big, big ocean. And that was, that was a pipe dream of Jac Roy. Because Jac Roy got uh, messed around by Cleco. And so uh, with his uh, mentality, he figure, okay, uh, you got the best of me, I'm gonna show you. I'm going to cut off my nose to spite my face. So what he did, we went by uh, what, twenty-five percent stake in uh, uh, Bayou Cove? So that, because there is a minimum amount of electrical production, you must meet to become a member of MISO, to be accepted into MISO. Cuz MISO doesn't just accept anybody. So for us to get to that level, Jac Roy decided, I'm gonna take the uh, settlement money from Cleco. I'm buying Bayou Cove, uh, percentage in Bayou Cove. And as far as nameplate, when you add up what the, the unit says it can produce on its nameplate and add it to DG Cove, and by the way, they also changed out the old units at, at uh, at DG Hunter and put in these Wartzilla engines. So now that gave City of Alexandria enough, that gave City of Alexandria enough uh, nameplate electrical generation capacity to gain Alexandria entrance or membership into MISO. And so now, once you become a member of MISO, you are bounded by their rules. You've given up uh, any operation of your unit. They tell us when we operate and when we can't, okay? So we no longer call the shots. But you ask, what are the benefits? The benefits are, if we have uh, extra, uh, first of all, it's supposed to benefit us by purchasing, say, like, natural gas. Uh, it's actually supposed to help us uh, by purchasing services and parts for our units. Like what is being talked about right now. But if you have different units from the other ones, then you you don't have the, the power of uh, uh, you know, all of these different companies of asking for a, a group sort of discount. You you don't benefit from that. But now what we're supposed to be benefiting from is the purchase of natural gas to, to run the units. But once again, the natural gas that we're getting, we're paying, I mean, you could go on the spot market and buy natural gas cheaper than what we're paying for. So those are supposed to be the benefits, that you have a wide network. If you're down, you have access to electricity from your MISO network. If you're running and you're producing extra energy, MISO is able to sell it for you on the open market. But and then you should be able to get better rates on natural gas uh, contracts and uh, maintenance and parts. But it does not look like we really benefit from that. So uh, you know, this was, this was just a bad situation from the very beginning. We're, we're too small of a unit. Uh, we really should not be in the electrical generation business. It's not saving us money. All you have to do is check with someone you know in Lafayette, Baton Rouge, Shreveport, Monroe, uh, Lake Charles. Compare their uh, electric bill to yours. See what you're paying as a fuel charge. See what you're paying on a kilowatt hour basis. You know, um, so the idea, you'll hear people like Fowler and Velard and, and Roy say, well, we would be paying a lot more if we didn't own our own unit and if we wasn't part of MISO. I don't believe that's the truth or the case. So, but do like I did a few years ago. Compare uh, uh, electric bills with other folks that you know. Uh, fortunately for me, I have relatives in New Orleans, in Baton Rouge, in uh, in uh, Lafayette. So we were able to sit there and dissect each other's bill and see who had the better deal. And uh, and Alexandria does not. So now that was a few years ago, but we probably need to repeat that exercise again and and confirm that or update that.
Thank you. Thanks so much. So basically what he said, it ain't no benefits.
Yeah, very little, very little.
Very little benefits. At least not for the citizens. Maybe it's so for him.
Uh, oh, yeah. Firmly, I firmly believe we would be better off if we sold our interest in the utility system and just bought off the grid. I really feel we would be in a better situation.
Uh, oh, and I got a comment that said, why didn't the, the, the utility director answer? He was sitting right there.
I know, that's what's so strange. In instead of Roy trying to explain the details of this, bring in the people who's, you know, actually in the utility system, uh, and let them explain that.
But you know, that's his micro um, management that he does.
Uh, he wanted to make sure, he wanted to make sure.
And and not only that, he definitely don't want, remember, he wouldn't let, when, when he had that guy confirmed by the city council, he would not let the guy talk to any of the council members.
Sure did. That's right. He sure did.
There's a reason for that.
That's right. So that tells me if that guy really knows what he's doing to y'all.
Right.
So you know, whenever he picks somebody, don't necessarily mean they um, they know what they're doing. Uh, somebody that said, sounds like the mayor loves being used, no? The mayor thinks he's doing, lots of times the mayor's making decisions off of his feelings.
Right.
I'm gonna say that. Most of that is emotional um, decisions he make. Like you said, Mr. Porter, when he did that, trying to get back at Cleco, but you still have to use Cleco. Nobody wants to talk about that part. You still taking fuel from, from Cleco.
Uh, not only fuel, but electricity.
I mean, electricity, that's what the word I wanted to use, electricity.
Because, because look, um, the DG Hunter plant, it cannot generate enough electricity to supply all of Alexandria need. So we're constantly buying off of the grid. And when MISO tell us don't run, that's because MISO can produce the electricity cheaper and sell it to us. And and guess what? One of the people MISO gets the electricity from in this local area is Cleco.
That's right. That's right.
So.
You can't make that up.
Yeah, so we, we really should not be, we should not be in the electrical generation business.
And that's, let's say that loud enough. Might get offended. Yep.
I heard his feelings.
Yeah.
And understand, we still are in debt for the um, the bond that the city went out and get in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen for uh, to purchase the Wartzilla engines and the twenty-five percent of Bayou Cove. So we're still paying for that and we will be paying for that until two thousand thirty, two thousand forty.
Yep, sure is. You're right. Now let me ask you something. When did they buy those, what's the name? When did that happen?
Uh, I think that was two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Because they, they floated the bonds, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. So I think they bought the engines in two thousand fifteen. And it's possible they could have bought them a year earlier.
I remember when they did the city council meeting, they were talking about it, but I couldn't remember what year that was. I couldn't remember the year. I thought it was, I thought it was um, the, I thought it was during the time before Brian passed away, but it wasn't. It was after.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Did you see the article? Did you see the article on KAB about Cleco warning for her scam?
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that article. That Cleco saying some people are calling, um, saying they're from the utility company or something.
Don't they do that like every year? They don't?
Every, every year around the holidays is always some type of scam, always. It's always going around the holidays.
Last, last time it was the restore scam.
Um, well, well, look, you know, um, uh, they do that with the Alexandria Utility System also.
Yeah, yeah.
I've gotten, in the past, I've gotten some calls that said, "Well, uh, your payment didn't go through." You know, and, uh, and so you can send your payment here, uh, within a certain amount of time and, uh, we will not charge you a late fee, you know? And so when I checked to see if my payment went through, it certainly did. So these are some other people. And then when you look, when you look at where they were asking you to send or, you know, make a payment, then it had nothing to do with, uh, with the City of Alexandria. So that's been going on, uh, in the past. Now, they hadn't done that lately. I hadn't received anything like that in the, the last few years. But we used to get targeted by that exact same scam.
They do that with the computers too, saying that you have something going on with your computer. They'll say they're Microsoft Office or something like that. And they do the same thing with computers.
They haven't contacted you yet, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. And, and look, um, if you, if you're a client or a customer of Alexandria Utility System, December first, they're changing their, uh, payment location. So you have to go back in, if you were paying online, you have to go back in and get a new account because they're switching from the old one to the new one. Now, it's taken them that long to, uh, to get to a new system, uh, ever since they were hacked, uh, way back when. It's taken them this long to get a new system.
Okay. That's, that's interesting.
What does that tell you?
Yeah, that, that tells you, they're just, they're just a sitting duck waiting for somebody to come along and take it down. That's, that's what it tells you.
Because in between that time, they could have got hacked again, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's right.
Oh, Lord have mercy. Okay, okay.
Antiquate is not the right word. I don't think the bid law, it is not the norm for cities to have a few, a full muni as we do, Mr. Lawverdane, as you know. So it's just not something they consider. You can imagine that over the decades, people have argued this about vehicles too. And that doesn't make it, because people say a Chevy and a Ford, we're not gonna let you only get a Chevy because that's what your guys want, or only get a Ford.
Typically, these guys.
This is different. These are different kinds of parts.
Typically, these guys can make these moves with private companies and.
Yes.
And since we are municipal.
That's correct.
It doesn't quite job.
A private company can elect and say, "We're not gonna risk it. We're only using Wartzilla parts." And they're at the mercy then of however that bid is, because even though they're not required to bid as we are, they bid, right? They get.
We, we shot a, a can over the bow. And we're seeing what we can do about it.
So these are certified.
Now, you hear the two people that's talking, right?
Mm-hmm.
Those two people, Mr. Porter, please correct me if I'm wrong, weren't, did they were on the city council when they got those back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen?
Yes, definitely.
And I think they voted for it.
Well, yes, definitely.
I think so. That's why they, you'll hear certain subject matters that they talk about.
Oh, yeah. They'll chime in on that.
They'll chip, they'll chime in. You'll know that they had a part in it when you hear them two talking. Whenever those two talk, you know they had a part in something. It happens every time. They can't hide it. They don't know how to play it off because they know they had a part in with that, that, uh, that Wartzilla.
By international organizations, Gary, if you imagine, they have some.
Oh, it was May is originally in Finland, Mr. Porter.
Tube or part that goes on a ju, this giant, I don't know. Give me a name of a part on it. What's the one we were talking about earlier?
Uh, maker's part, uh, that's one that Wartzilla uses that.
I'm trying to give them a car comparison. Give me something like that having a car. It is, we do have big spar, it is, there's a system of that. I was gonna say, I was gonna say carburetor, but I don't wanna say that. So, so a water pump. So they would test that. They would test that strength of that pump at all of those same pressures with, in, in, tensile. Potential strength of that has to operate the same. So they're gonna apply that force.
So again, why isn't the utility director explaining? No, but he couldn't even, okay, listen again. Who's doing all the explaining? That should tell you a lot, because I don't think he's really familiar with that Wartzilla, uh, what's the name? Now, if Mark Hart was sitting there, Mark Hart could talk because he was part of that, 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 uh, they purchased, when they purchased those, um, engines. He could talk, but this guy right here, I don't think he knows all that, what they claim he knows. I don't believe he does. I'm, that's just me.
They're gonna have an international rating agency say, "This non-OEM aftermarket part meets the same strength as that one." That's a hundred percent an accurate report, so there's no dispute in that. Wartzilla just doesn't wanna do it. So if you're me or you're Marcus, then your next question has to be, "Why not?" And is, does Wartzilla do a set of tests that are more rigorous? And, and is something we have to worry about? We have had a rebuild already. It has not been an issue. But I would never say, nor would the utility director say, that we don't both think that Wartzilla parts are better for Wartzilla engines than non-Wartzilla parts. The issue is, we don't have a choice in the law. So we can't, what we'd love to do is, you'd hire Wartzilla in some sort of professional service since it's the one doing it and they would use their parts within it. We can't do that. We'd love to. But if everyone could do that, everyone would get around the bid law. You'd enter into a car lot, a management agreement, they would send you only their cars. That would be circumventing the bid law. You would never be allowed. So that's where we are.
All right.
Uh, so you're saying, so when we, when part of this council voted for these Wartzilla engines back, this was not seen to be an upcoming problem. And when you were using the analysis of cars, I'm looking at, if I buy a Cadillac and they go, and they wanna put a Chevy part on, I'm gonna have a problem with that. So that's what you said, the, uh, NO, NOPs, non-original parts. So, and they're gonna test them and they should work comfortably. And the only reason I'm asking all these questions, because I read dispute. I didn't write the fact sheet, but I read dispute. And I was wondering where we were going with that. So if you're all comfortable using these NOP parts and to make, uh, that's fine. I just wanted, I just wanted the explanation why dispute was in the statement.
Mr. Green, I think what you're saying is perfectly logical and I think it's a good catch that you made.
Because I think at the time, Mr. Green was on the council. That's why he's saying that. Because he said, because some of y'all voted for it. If you heard what he said, he said some of y'all parents voted for it, right? Because I, like I said before, if I'm not mistaken, was Lavadon, I think Green was up there then, and Fowler and Valard. And I think Green, um, I don't think they voted for it. I think Valard and Fowler did vote for that. That's why it, it, it came to my mind when he said it.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I, I don't recall exactly, but I do remember that, um, that Ed Lawverdane and Jules Green did not vote for that bond, uh, to go, uh, forward, because that ended up being a hundred fifty million dollars. And it was at four and a half and five percent. That's back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Now, other cities that floated utility bonds during that time, they, they were getting two point seven five, three percent interest. Uh, and people were buying their bonds. We were at four and a half and five percent. Uh, you know, and they still never explained why that was. Uh, but Harry Silver, um, Fowler, Valard, and I guess it would have been, uh.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt. That's it. That's who it was. Yep, Roosevelt.
Now, that's, that's four. And then Ed and, um, and Jules. The seventh person.
Harry Silver.
No, he already said that.
I mentioned Silver. Look, the, the seventh person.
Was it Mr., was it Mr. Fuller?
Uh, no, no, no. It, it would either have been Jonathan Goins. Oh, you know what? It may have been that guy Jerry Jones.
Jerry Jones. That's who it was back then. That might have been Jerry Jones.
Yeah.
And, um, Mr., um, Mr. Lavadon and Mr. Green voted against it.
Well, you know what? That wouldn't have been Jones because didn't, uh, Jules Green.
That would have been Goins.
It would have been Jonathan Goins.
The guy sitting next to the mayor.
Yeah, it would have been Jonathan Goins. Or, or it could have been Mitzi Gibson.
Oh, yeah. It could have been Mitzi up there then.
Oh, you know what? Let me back up, um. If not Mitzi, it would have been, uh, Hobbs.
Nah, it would.
No, Pumpkin, not Hobbs.
It, it wouldn't have been Hobbs, okay.
Nah, it would have, I think it was Jerry. I think it was Jerry because it was either Jerry or Jon, but it couldn't have been Jonathan. It was Jerry. It had to be Jerry.
Okay. Oh, well, okay, because when Jonathan, uh, resigned. You know.
Oh, oh, yeah. Jock, Jock boy picked Jerry.
Yeah.
Yep, he sure did. Yep. That's right.
But anyway, this was two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. So whoever was in there those two times, that, uh, that's what it was. But it didn't matter because they already had the four votes. There was only two dissenting votes, and that was Ed Lawverdane and Jules Green.
That's right. Sure was. I can remember that.
But just look at the sentence. It's currently in dispute over utilization of low bid, non-OEM. So it's, we, we're not in a dispute with them. There's no issue with us and Wartzilla. It's that Wartzilla doesn't wanna work on the engines without using their parts. And without disparaging Wartzilla, I would say, uh, one of these two guys said it. They're playing a bit of a hardball game to see what we'll do to say, "We won't do it unless you do that. We were your low bidder." But the next.
That's the difference without a distinction, actually. I mean, you know, if, if, uh, if our engines need to be worked on and something breaks and they're saying, "Hey, we won't make the repairs unless you use these equipments." It kinda has over barrel. Wouldn't you agree?
No, I, you said difference without a distinction. It's a difference, that's a difference. Here, here's the distinction. There's another group that can work on it. That group has already worked on our engines in the past. They just didn't win the bid this time. They're second low and responsible and responsive. Now they get a chance by what you do because Wartzilla de, decided for the first time ever to play hardball. So it's the opposite of a difference without a distinction. It's just a difference. They're just trying to get over it.
I'm just concerned that, 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 you know, we look at the day and we can't produce power because we have motors that are, engines, generators that are down.
Well, there, there's a, there's a million reasons that could happen that have nothing to do with parts. There's catastrophic losses, all kind of things. No one can guarantee against that.
Okay, it was Mitzi, Mr. Porter, in Tavars.
Okay.
It was Ed Lavadon, Harry Silver, James Valard, Chuck Fowler, Jules Green. I knew Jules Green was there and Mitzi was out. It was Lee Rubin. It was Lee Rubin.
Oh, okay.
It was on the city council then.
Okay. All right. So, uh, and I'm not sure how Mitzi voted. I, I don't know if she voted for it or against it.
We'd have to find that out later. Yeah, yeah. But yeah.
Okay. Very good. Good, uh, checking on that.
But the question is, when we built this structure, would you ever see these things happen? Of course you do. This is the constraint of our bid law. But we've already used this company in the past and non-OEM parts in the past.
Without any problems. Okay.
So you do have a backup if Wartzilla doesn't agree with everything.
I think what I would want to disclose to y'all in, in total candor is, I just, in, in my heart of hearts, you'd, you'd want Wartzilla because they designed it and you'd want Wartzilla parts. But I would tell Mr. Green, if you're bringing your Cadillac, your Mercedes, your BMW in after the fact that you've got a aftermarket insurance policy, you can tell them all day that you only want a brand-new BMW part. But you ain't getting one and there's no way you can make them do it if you have that after, after you've run your regular warranty period, you bought the, what's the?
Extended warranty.
The extended warranty company that advertises. That's where we are. We're after all that, Tom.
Endurance. Endurance.
So, so we're after that.
So what he's saying is, we no longer have an extended warranty on those parts. That's basically what he's saying, right?
Uh, on, on the units themselves, the actual turbines.
Yeah, that's what, it ran out of its warranty.
Oh, yeah, a long time ago. Long, long time ago.
Endurance.
Or you can pay the difference, or you can pay the difference.
All in favor? In opposed, motion carried.
Number sixteen. To consider filing documents with ordinance or the rest of the zoning of property at thirty-two twenty MacArthur Drive, Alexandria Parish, at Peace, Louisiana, from C two general commercial to I two general industrial district to allow heavy industrial retail sales.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Fowler, second by Councilman Fowler. Um, public comments. Mr. LaFleur, Eric?
I'm here, this man.
Okay. We can have your three minutes. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. So, uh, I'm Eric LaFleur. Uh, I'm from New Orleans, but I'm really from Bill Platte. So, uh, we're here, I'm here on behalf of Progressive Tractor Implement Company. Uh, I serve as their, their general counsel. Um, they are, we have asked for a zoning change in order for us to locate, uh, uh, and set up shop here in Alexandria. Um, Progressive Tractor Implement Company, uh, is the third largest case agriculture dealer in the United, in North America. Uh, the owner is Thomas Swallow from down the street in Bunky. Uh, he's originally from Bill Platte. I figured, figured that. And, uh, we, uh, we were invited, the, the, the way the zoning was set up, it wouldn't allow us to operate, uh, a dealership, um, to sell and service, uh, and, and instruct in, uh, equipment. Uh, so we're asking for a change in it. Um, we did agree, uh, with the zoning, uh, commission to, to, to impose restrictive covenants on the use of the land in the event that we would ever sell it to someone else so that we would only use it strictly for what our intended purposes, uh, are.
Okay, so is this company coming in with jobs?
Keep listening.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I don't know.
Um, and so I just, I don't know, I, I guess you have the ordinance, but we did work with them and, and get all of that, uh, that straight.
I don't know if they gave the, I think y'all got the drive. So I just would say, normally, uh, what the senator is saying is correct. Eric's a, a former, uh, longtime state senator. I think most of you know that. Normally with, out of zoning, we can't force a deal. But in this case, they've offered something that has been accepted. So there's an offer on the table to put the restrictive covenant in and we accept. The council will accept by this ordinance and they're doing us a favor. So while they need the additional, uh, zoning, uh, increase in ability to have commercial, they have put all the things that they would never sell that property and not include in this restrictive covenant. And it's a whole bunch of things that, uh, y'all would agree with, so.
Okay, so I'm sorry I stopped right there. But I want y'all to always watch the mayor when it comes to stuff that he wants the city, the council, to vote on. Just, just watch how he does, he's like a car salesman, this car is going to be a great deal, uh, they're doing us a favor, da, 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 he always does that. He's trying to convince the city council to say yay on this by giving this man this, uh. Uh, redoing the zoning so that he can come here, so he's making this, oh, they're doing us a favor. To, to, to allow this to happen, because they're coming here for us. Just watch how he always does it, he does it every time, because any other time he wouldn't be at these council members, these council meetings. Just watch how often he comes to a city council meeting and guarantees you it's something on that agenda that he put his hands on. All, every time.
It's a deed restriction, so that's what they're offering and that we're accepting, this is how it's supposed to work, it's a, it's a good neighbor thing to have, uh, local people come, uh, open this up here. Uh, create opportunity for us and then do this.
I have a question, Mr. How many jobs do you think this is going to create?
Um, I think initially, we probably, would probably only have maybe a dozen at the very beginning.
That's fine.
Uh, the, uh, but the, the reason why we want to come to Alexandria. Same reason you have Sennel operation, central Louisiana, I don't know if you still have that, but. Uh, for our company, our size with thirty-three locations and a bunch of locations in Louisiana, this was a, this was the ideal location for us.
Now, did you hear how many jobs he was bringing here initially?
Forget that, did you hear this nigga quote Sennel operation?
Do you know how old Sennel operation is?
We had Sennel operation.
And, and you know who got rid of Sennel operation, right?
That fucker sitting right there.
Jacque Roy, Jacque Roy got rid of it because it was too many black people profiting from it. And the black people came out to that celebration, uh, in droves.
The queuing on the red was part of that.
Uh, queuing on the red, that's right, with the big, uh, barbecue contests and stuff.
Yep, sure did, he got rid of it, he sure did. Now, this guy is a former.
Didn't they, didn't they have Frankie Beverly?
Yes.
Every year they came, Frankie Beverly amazed came down.
Yep, yep, sure did, and look, this guy, he's a former senator, y'all gotta listen to the favors. Now, Jacque is a mayor, he's a former senator.
Yeah, this is a good old boy hookup.
Yeah, this is a hookup, you can, look, you can spray it, you can put perfume on it, you can put, this is a hookup. Okay, now, think about how long Alexandria ain't had this type of company in Alexandria. Think about it, he brings these small scale companies.
No, that's, nah, that's, they're pretty big, they're the third largest in the nation.
Yeah, but they got thirty-three locations.
Locations, okay.
What this is going to be, a, and look, you, you gotta pick up on every word because he's, he's being real. Uh, specific with his choice of words.
Words, uh-huh.
He said at the beginning, it will be twelve people, a dozen.
Right, that's right.
That means as they get up and operating, it'll drop below that. Now, this is strictly going to be a sales office, so you don't have to go to Lafayette. To buy, uh, their product, uh, you know, because this is heavy equipment, right, for agriculture.
Exactly.
So we already got a John Deere, uh, on MacArthur, we got a Case fifty. On, I forget what's, what highway that's on, you know, that's in this area, so now they're bringing their, uh, uh. Their models here. And, um, and that's what, that's what it's going to be, so it's a sale office, they'll, they'll have their tractors and, and earth movers and all that other stuff. Laid out on their lot, they'll have a little sales office, and whatever salespersons and managers they have. He said when he first started, it'll be twelve, I'm sure that's to train people, and then after that, I bet it'll be about six. I'm serious, yeah.
They, they gotta figure out who they can, or they probably be moving people from other locations.
They may, yeah.
Yeah. Now, if you notice how when he asked that, you seen how he almost hesitated in answering, and then when he answered, he had like an expression on his face. Because you already know, you ain't bringing nothing here, that was like you said, Mr. Porter, that was a good old boy hookup. That's what he brings, he don't bring real solid jobs here, he brings hookups, and those people are not hiring nobody.
All right, they'll, they'll have salesperson, they'll have office manager, they'll have an accountant. You know, somebody you paid to, when you buy the tractor, who you pay, uh, you know, so. I doubt if they'll have more than six people once they train everybody and get their system up and running. And then you'll have a person that, you know, is responsible for moving the tractors around, might be one or two of them, so. Yeah, I'm serious, so you, you're probably going to have about six people.
Yeah, at the most, yeah, yeah, that's interesting.
Us, uh, and it opens up the door to do the, what you're thinking of, which is be, this would be much more than a, a small operation with much larger operation, it might have to include possibly, uh, the England, um. England, uh, is it England Air Force Base?
Air Force.
Air, air bomber. Um, because this would be retail.
Yeah, this guy knows.
Now, now, who knows, see, that's why you know this is a hookup, this is a hookup.
No idea what's going on.
He is so lost with what's going on in Alexandria, so you know this is a hookup, because if I got a business that I'm trying to bring somewhere. You can guarantee, I'm going to study, I'm going to come here, and I'm going to go with people to take me on a tour of all the areas that I need to be familiar with. This, this guy, he talked about Sennel operation, think about how long ago Sennel operation was.
Uh, that had to be twenty-five years ago.
Okay, and then you don't even know, it's not even the England Air Park, it's not even the Air Force anymore, it's England Air Park, you don't know that?
Yeah, that means he hasn't been in this area for about twenty-five years, or maybe, maybe longer. Because you see, that's his, that's his recollection, it was the England Air Force Base. You know, your, your big event was Sennel operation, you know, uh, but we're talking twenty-five plus years ago.
So where are you? So you should be embarrassed to come up here in front of them, and you don't even know what's going on in the city.
They thought, they, Shamira said boo, get out of here. Boo, boo.
And, and you know what? They're going to vote on it.
I don't know, no, it, it, go ahead, keep going.
Possibly corporate, but the, the fact that, uh, Alexandria had essentially located with highways going everywhere and an airport that has capacity. For potentially for us to use it as our, uh, logistics center to ship out to stores that we have in Alex, in, uh, Arkansas, Tennessee. Louisiana, and even soon in, in Mississippi.
Well, we thank you for bringing your company here, even if you're hiring twelve employees.
Initially.
He's out on the stepping stone.
So, uh. We thank you for that, Mr. LaFleur.
If there's anything we can do to help the process, please let us know.
But, uh, the company's growing and it gets, it's probably doubled in size in the last six or seven years and.
Okay, I'm trying to find out what's funny, did, did I miss the joke? And for y'all to, and hold up, this is my issue, y'all, I'm sorry, this is my issue. Now, y'all sitting up there happy, this man bringing twelve jobs here, he ain't coming with a full manufacturer, he talking about the logistics when they start shipping stuff up, okay. Okay, so that's what you should have came to the table with from the get-go, to me, that's what I think, I'm, maybe I'm wrong. You should have came to the table with the logistic company, the logistic part of your company, and have your sales company somewhere else. But if you want to go out on the England Air Park, well, England Air Force Base to him, and get a building out there and bring jobs here, that's a different whole ballgame, but what you.
Wait, 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 he didn't say all that, he didn't say all that.
No, um, because you see, he wouldn't have to come, uh, to the city council.
That's right.
A zoning change, England Airport is its own separate authority. We, we don't get any revenue, the city of Alexandria doesn't get any revenue from, uh, the airport, not at all.
So, yeah, so they would be getting all the money as far as him talking about logistics, that wouldn't come to Alexandria.
But he doesn't know that, he doesn't know that.
Obviously, he probably don't, but I think it's a bunch of bullshit still, I'm sorry.
Well, and then, to be very honest with you, I don't think they would be flying parts in.
No.
By airplane, they would ship it, or it would come by rail.
Yeah, yeah.
They, I don't think they, because you see, we're talking this heavy equipment, uh, you know, they. They're, if they're going to stock parts for the equipment that they sell, repair parts.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's going to come in on a big eighteen wheeler.
Yeah, so, I mean, well, he could do that, they could have their building, you know, they could do that out there, don't have to use the air, the airplanes. But the builder, they have buildings out there where they could actually do that, they have.
That's interesting, because if he's going to use, if he's going to warehouse his items on the airport. And just have a, 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 a sales office in Alexandria. Yeah, that's, uh, that's interesting, that, that'll, that'll be different, so.
But that's, if that's really true, because you'll say whatever you need if you're trying to sell a car, right?
Uh, that's right, that's right, like, uh, you know, let's go all the way back to, uh, Bayou Steel. When Bayou Steel came here, they talked this high number of jobs.
Mm-hmm.
And when Bayou Steel got up and running that job, the, that was about one tenth the number of jobs they advertise. Or the way they sew all of that. You know, it, it got down to one tenth of what they initially told us.
So, yep, yeah, that's interesting, that's why I said it talking, it talk don't mean nothing.
And, and look, Union Tank Car did the exact same.
Same thing, sure did.
There was supposed to be a whole bunch of jobs there, and after the construction was completed, and the construction workers left. And went back to wherever they came from.
Yep.
The actual job was a fraction of what they advertised.
That's right. So, wait, sure did.
If he's saying twelve, I think it's going to be six.
Looking for a place like this where we have the potential to. What's that?
I was because of legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur, we look forward to having your business here, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, before we adjourn, I missed the, um, opportunity to, um, remember Mr. Fuller. So at this time, can we please have a moment of silence for Mr. Joe Fuller?
Thank you, and I also would like, um, everyone, I'm bragging about my brother and my sister-in-law, would you please stay in there, back home from Korea?
Oh.
And they have made my week tremendously well due to the fact that it was home for death, but just having my brother and my sister-in-law here with me eased the pain some, um. Yes, he was.
So, y'all remember when I got elected and I came up here bragging about how good a basketball player I was? I said, well, my record's been broken, and tonight, in about an hour, my grandson get a chance to make his thousand points, he's six, he's six points away from thousands. So he averaged more points than me, but he, he never would catch how many points I scored.
Okay, I'm sorry, y'all. Sorry, y'all, I apologize. Um, okay, all right, so this the end of the, the meeting, right? It's over?
Nah, it's more to it.
Your grandson.
Also before, I want to, also want to dovetail on Mr. Joe Fuller, um, a mighty man, he's leaving a tremendous legacy. Um, he was my dad's coffee drinking partner. And early in my legal career, I used to try to ear hustle on the conversations, he would put me out the office, but as I got older, I was allowed to stay. And listen to those conversations, um, he leaves quite a legacy, Chuck, you and. I served with him, Jules, you served with him, I served with him for a year. And during that time, I, I learned a tremendous amount from that, from him. Um, he leaves a legacy, I believe he was the community director under Mayor Schneider, and was also chief of staff. Under Mayor Schneider, and then from there, he went to the police jury and served several years, and then from there. Worked for Buddy Caldwell, the AG's office, and then he came back to serve as a city councilman from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Um, he leaves an incredible legacy. And in the days to come, oh, I've, I've also learned about some of his accomplishments, um, when he was on a police jury, and this was back in the eighties. Our airport was at Essler, but he along with, uh, Mr. Lawson were instrumental in bringing the airport from Pineville to Alexandria. So, um, and he was also a champion for affordable housing, he was also known for taking trips and going elsewhere and bringing back knowledge. That helped improve central Louisiana, especially the whip board, so, uh, he lives, leaves quite a legacy. A mighty, mighty oak has fallen. So, um, in days to come, I will be asking each of my council members to support an initiative to, to honor. Uh, Honorable Joe Fuller. Um, we're throwing around some ideas, but I'm going to speak with the family, and, um. I think it's only fitting that a man of his stature be recognized and memorialized in our city. So in days to come, I will be speaking to each of, each one of you and asking for your support. I think he is a man who's earned it, and it should be, it should happen, so, um, let's all pray for Mr. Fuller's family.
Man.
Um, uh, it, it's, it, this one really hurts me because. I've, uh, I've lost my father, and now I'm losing a father figure. So. Um, he, he looked, and he.
It's okay.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Uh, to the general public, Mr. Fuller's services, November the twenty-second, this Saturday, two o'clock PM, New Birth Baptist Church. Located on Enterprise Road, passed by Reverend Errol Dorsey, determined will be Garden of Memory, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a, that was a, a wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh. So, yeah, now you know what I know about the city council meeting today.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, that's how it's done, Malcolm, good job, good job.
Yeah. He was the, like he said, a mighty oak.
Right, but. Here's the thing, right, as strong as, and as, as adamant as he was, I hope that in his passing. That the current council keeps that, that energy, that same motion going that he had. The same fervor for his community that he had, right, because he, he touched a lot of lives, um, he touched mine. So, you know, that's why we do this, and we joke about not getting paid for this, and we joke about how long we've been doing this, but really, it's people like Mr. Fuller, it's people like Mr. Porter. Y'all are the reason why we continue to do this.
Yep.
We're too, we're too far down the rabbit hole to turn.
But come December, if y'all put Jacque Roy back in there, I promise you, we ain't too far, because we would be hanging Kimmy B. Frank up, okay?
But, yeah, we not, that's the reason why we do this, but.
Yes, yes.
We gotta, you gotta keep it up, and y'all don't know how much he was involved behind the scenes even after he got out of office.
Yes.
It's just so, there's so much that the public will never know.
Yep.
But, and, and it's probably good that way, because, you know, he, he, he got, he's getting his flowers, he's definitely, and he deserves them. Anybody that worked that hard for the, for the people and that long, and made a life out of it.
Yeah.
They deserve it, so hopefully that inspires, that inspires our city, city, and hopefully inspires the citizens, the city council. Hopefully it inspires y'all to know how much, and how hard people are working. are working on your behalf about things you don't even know about.
That's right, and been working hard for a long time, they've been toeing that line for a long time.
Long time.
And Miss, when Mr. Porter came along, Mr. Porter came along like a bright, fresh light that was needed to add on to all the fire, he needed to be that other fire that Mr. Green, Mr. Port, Mr. Laverdam, Mr. Green needed, they needed that other fire, and Mr. Porter came in and he just dropped the ball, he just like, okay, let's make this happen, and you guys have no idea. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go, let me stop talking.
It's, it's important to, to recognize the people that's around you that's doing it, and the people that's around you, it's good to not just recognize them, but see what they're doing. This information is, is, is free, of course it's free, but do you know it? That's the problem, do you know, do you know the information, do you know what's going on? And if you don't know what's going on, if you're not involved, then you, you, there's people that are that have given everything they had and some to this, to this, this cost, to little old Alexandria. And I feel like sometimes people in Alexandria don't think like Alexandria's big enough to care about. But the way these people come in and capitalize off of Alexandria and the way they use the resources in Alexandria and we get none of the benefits, that's what we're talking about. That's what the claim was, that's what the argument, that's where the problem lies, is that all these people come to Alexandria and they benefit and the people, the people that Mr. Fuller fight for, the fought for, the people that Mr. Porter is fighting with and fighting for, the people that we're fighting with and fighting for. Y'all don't know, y'all are on the, on the, on the short end of the stick, and that's all we be trying to do, that's all Mr. Porter was trying to do. That's all Mr. Fuller was trying to do. Is to tell y'all, man, y'all are getting the short end of the stick, and y'all deserve so much more than what, what y'all get. So in that spirit, I don't mind, if you wanna, if you wanna roll the credits, that was the city council, I'm sure, will we be back tomorrow, we'll do some more Mr. Fuller videos tomorrow night on the regularly scheduled show, but yeah, I definitely wanted to get this show in so people could be aware. Make sure you share the show, make sure you like the show if you're watching us on YouTube, click the QR code in the corner, that'll bring you to Universal Collective Network, and you can follow us on Facebook, but, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
Would you be able to post the information about his funeral on?
I already did, and I'll, I'll share, yeah, I'll share it over to you, I just shared it just now.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so, um, thank you, Mr. Porter, for coming in and hanging out, thank you, Ms. Bell, for coming, coming in, and thank you, Ms. Bell, for all the work, cuz you go into the category with Mr. Porter, coming in and you do all that work, you do, you show up at them city council meetings, if you by yourself, you're, you're there, and you question and you do all those things, I thank you and I appreciate everything you do, I really do.
Great job, Ms. Bell, you, you're certainly a community activist.
That's right, that's right. Join the club.
I wanted to, I wanted to tell you something, I was told about this Terry Holmes and the incident behind it.
Okay.
He apparently stepped off, and I don't know where this took place, he stepped off on a sidewalk or whatever, and it was an uncovered drain or manhole, he broke his leg and a couple other things that he broke, or whatever, so I was told that one day this week about that.
Damn, that was on the city, ah, that's messed up.
Well, you posted the docket number, so anybody interested could go to the Judicial District Court website and pull up that docket and, and read the circumstances of that suit.
And that's one of the things Mr. White had asked about, you know, how would we know what was paid, because they went into executive session.
Yeah, they sure did.
Jonathan Goins told him that it was three thousand, three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents, anybody could go, but if you don't go on the website and look at that information packet, they have everything in there, fact sheets and everything, so, and, and people don't, they, they don't know or they don't go look or whatever and stuff, so, but that's what I was told that happened to Terry Holmes.
Okay, so, and the thing is too, people don't know how to go look stuff up, you gotta keep that in mind, people are not like us, you know, we know what to go look for and how to go look, a lot of people don't know how to do that, so, yeah, I'm glad you explained that and cleared that up, cuz I was just, I was curious about who, you know, I heard them talk about it before, but I, I, the name Terry Holmes is also a person that we know from in the family, like down in Ruby, that there's a Terry student, but you said it's a male, okay, so that's a different story. All right, so you guys, thank you so much for hanging out with us, we shall be back tomorrow night, and like Tavars said, we're gonna bring up some more stuff, videos and comments and stuff Mr. Fuller said, which is so funny, this, huh, I'm, what'd he say, I'm Joe Fuller. So we're gonna be going back through those again, um, so I wanna say thank you again, Ms. Bell, thank you, Mr. Porter, for all the things that you do, um, thank you, Tavars, you get paid this week this time, I promise, and I just don't cash your check until the first, okay? Ms. Finley, thank you for hanging out, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Turner, thank you guys so much for hanging out with us tonight, I saw Mr. Scott slipped in, he didn't stay long, Mr. Brown came in, was it Mr. Scott, no, that wasn't, I'm sorry, that was Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown came in, thank you guys for hanging out, thank you for everybody on YouTube who was watching, thank you everybody who's watching on all the platforms that we put this out on, I hope you learned something today, our whole thing is to make sure you guys are getting the information that you're not getting anywhere else, we know you're not, so this is why we do this, and like I said, if you guys put Jacque back in there in 2026, we're not doing this anymore, you're on your own, cuz by now you should know everything, right? All right, so you guys have a great night and bye-bye.
Bye-bye.